Hello, everybody. Hello, it's 6:30. Here we go. Now we're working. The mic is working. Can people hear okay?
Yep.
Great. Thank you all for coming out. We arranged the hottest night of the year for this. So we're sorry. We do apologize for the noise of the air conditioning. I know that it is difficult to hear sometimes. I will do my best at the mic, but we do have computer servers in the room that need to stay cool, so we can't turn them off. We get severely reprimanded by our IT team when we turn them off. So we will try to work with the mic or whatever, or people can come closer. My name is Bill Fraser. I'm the city manager here. Our goal tonight is to go talk through... Here's our schedule for tonight. Some brief comments from Mayor Watson to kick the meeting off. And then I'm just going to walk through basics about this parking garage, who, what, when, where, why. It's sort of ABCs of the garage. And then go to some frequently asked questions. We've already started getting a lot of questions, some of them are similar. I will do my best to answer them. I'm going to be clear right from the get-go. I'm not a designer, I'm not an engineer, I'm not an expert. If we can't answer your question, we're going to try to take note of it and get it out published to do the best. Tried to put this together, but it's an overview. After we do that, we'll walk through what the next steps are in the process. And then really what we hope to get is questions, comments, and suggestions from all of you about what you like, what you don't like, what could we improve it, should we do this, shouldn't we do it, et cetera. And then I would love to end by 8:00 PM if possible with a this-size crowd. I think that's okay. So with no further ado, I'm going to kick it off to Mayor Watson.
Hey, everybody. Thank you so much for coming out tonight. This is a really big project for us, and it's a big deal. And it's worth knowing what all the facts are and asking good questions about it. So I just want to give you a little context for this. I know since I became a councilor five, six years ago at this point, I've been fielding questions about parking in the city of Montpelier. And so it's really exciting to me to have the possibility of a parking garage or a solution to this project or to a solution to that problem. You know, one of the things I think that is worth noting about this project is that it is intended to leverage some private business here, which is not just any business, it's a hotel, which exists to bring people in from out of town. So one of the things that I am excited about for this project is that this is going to bring more people in from out of town to help support our downtown businesses. I think that's going to be really important for our community moving forward to have a thriving downtown. So that's another point I would make about this. And then the last is, one of the things that came up over and over again in the council discussion was about the nature of parking in Montpelier, that if we were to stack parking, if we're to consolidate it, that that gives us some options for what we might want to do with our street parking. You know, parking is not always everybody's favorite topic, but putting it all together and then having some more options for what we want to do with street parking, whether that's parklets or bike lanes or whatever it is, it at least gives us some choices there. So I, hopefully, I don't think any of this is going to be new for me, but I'm looking forward to talking more about this. So I'm going to turn it back over to Bill.
Thank you, Mayor.
We'll get lights.
Oh, yeah, lights will be good. I knew there was something wrong here. We're going to work on our staging. There we go. Now we can see better. Sorry you lost it later. So a lot of this, many of you may have already known or read about, but I'm just going to go through this as these are really the basics. What is this project? We're talking about a 348-space parking garage. In addition, 50 leased surface spaces. We currently lease about 50 spaces from Capital Plaza. We will be continuing to do that in a different location. So while this garage is sitting on top of those, we will continue to have those. That results in 160 net new parking spaces in downtown. I'll talk about that a little bit more in a minute. And we can do this without increasing property taxes, and I'll explain that. Next. Okay, so this...
Oops, I'm sorry, Bill.
Here we go. This is just a basic overview image. I will be clear that the parking garage here, you can see the white proposed Hampton Inn in the center. The Capital Plaza is in the foreground. Next to that is Christ Church. And behind that, that box, is a proposed new housing for Christ Church. Probably isn't going to happen for two or three years at least, but we've been, us and the Capital Plaza and Christ Church have been trying to plan for this so that we can accommodate everything. Behind those housing is the parking garage. Now, that garage in that image is not the one we're proposing. That's the one that's been approved for the hotel only. That's only a 200-unit garage. They don't have this total image with the larger garage. I just wanted people to see the general layout. Behind the Hampton Inn is the One Taylor project, which is under construction now. So that is the transit center and 30 affordable housing units in the bike path you can see swinging by and going along. So where will this happen? I just showed you. So the garage will be behind Christ Church on property that is currently owned by Capital Plaza. The hotel will be behind Capital Plaza. This is just another site plan of it. Again, the smaller garage on the site plan, but just so people can see how the traffic flows through, we will have deeded access from State Street and Taylor Street to the garage. There'll either be city streets or deeded rights of way. And in the center, that blue in the center is the new parking that's being constructed, the surface parking that will be leased for public short-term parking in addition to the long-term. So who's doing the project, right? We talked about a lot of things. The city would be owning, constructing, and developing the garage, managing and running the garage. The property that it would be on is going to be donated by Capital Plaza to the city for this project. It's worth approximately $500,000, give or take $250,000 either direction, I believe. And then the Capital Plaza will be on their own property, developing their own Hampton Inn. One question has come up, and it's not my place to speak for Capital Plaza, and they are here to speak for themselves, but I've heard from several people that, "Why are we doing this?" Because Hilton is just paying for all of this. And I want to be clear that the local family that owns this actually is purchasing a franchise agreement from Hilton and developing this with their own financing and home running. So the Hilton Corporation is not paying for this in any way, shape, or form. So I just want to make sure that is clear. So why are we doing this, right? That's what's the point. And I'm sure a lot of people have opinions about that. Well, we had, a couple of years ago, we commissioned an economic development strategic plan, had many community stakeholders involved, many residents, many merchants, and we tried to identify ways that we could help responsibly grow the community, share the tax base, and also make us more vibrant. The top two, top three things that came out of that were, one, a transformational downtown project hotel; two, need to improve parking; and three, housing. This project addresses all of that in some way. So this is really a continuation of a plan and identified set of needs. This isn't, I don't think, just a reaction. New public parking. I mentioned there are 160 parking spaces. I've heard some people say, "What's that mean?" So I checked. We have 610 parking spaces under city management right now. That includes all the meters on the streets, all the parking lots that we own, sell permits or rights to. Obviously, there's plenty of other free parking around the city. We have 610 managed spaces. So 160 net new is a 26% increase in managed parking in core downtown. So it is a significant difference. It's not a small thing. The new hotel is, as we mentioned, a key economic driver. It will bring, as the mayor said, new people to town. It's obviously a private business, but there is a public benefit to that. Again, this could help accommodate affordable housing. I think we're talking about 20 or 25 units of affordable housing. That's on top of the 30 units of affordable housing the city's building in One Taylor. And again, the 50 surface parking spots, those are included in the 116 net new. The bike path, as we saw in the image, there's a bike path going through there. Before this project came, there wasn't really a good connection or a good ADA compliant connection. This is going to allow us to build a real, very good, small park-like area with ramps and placed actually with bike repair tools. Capital Plaza haven't designed it. The city will take it over as part of our construction project. But this is really, I think, important. People can park in this garage, use the bike path. Guests of the hotel can use this bike path. As can, of course, all of us. And finally, city, we have local option stacks here. We have a rooms meal and alcohol tax. 80 more rooms is more tax revenue to the city. None of that has been factored into the calculations of this project. So any of that revenue is something above and beyond for the city that has not been factored in here. But that is a benefit to the city, again, as those people are in town and they spend money on meals and alcohol. That is also an issue around here. When will this happen? Well, of course, nothing ever seems to move as fast as we'd like sometimes, and for some people, probably it's happening too fast. But it will be triggered off of a bond vote, tentatively scheduled for November 6. Now, the city council has given preliminary approval to go forward with this project, but they'll be taking a final vote whether or not to put this on the ballot on October 3rd. After that, November 6 is the general election day when we're voting for governor and anything else, so we'll be coming in and you can vote on this project, probably a couple of other items. The permitting processes will be happening parallel to that. So we expect, again, the hotel itself has already been permitted. The smaller garage has already been permitted. That happened this spring. So the expansion from the smaller to the larger garage is what we'll be going through the permitting process at this point. And because that's an amendment, it will still require all the same review, but maybe not as many meetings. And then if everything passes, the hotel, as I understand it, has a license agreement with Hilton Corporation, which requires them to start work by November. So they've been waiting to see whether or not the company garage is going to happen. It looks like it's going to. They will be doing some work on-site in November. It really makes the most sense for these two projects to be built together. So the bulk of the work will probably start in December, with the garage and hotels flooring footings and everything at the same time. It's much more efficient that way. So how are we going to pay for this, right? It's a $10 million project. I'm going to go through a little bit of the details about this. That cost includes the costs of design, environmental, construction, permitting, that kind of thing. So we factor all of that in. We have fairly good estimates, but estimates are still estimates. It also assumes the current bond interest rate. This will be funded on a 30-year bond with interest only for the first four years. And if people really want to get into the cash flow, I'm happy to do that with them, but I probably won't do much of that today. We've assumed annual CPI adjustments of 2 and 1/4% for the entire term. That's on both the revenue coming in as well as the expenses going out. So the idea is that they would be roughly comparable. TIF. I'm not going to go into a long thing about TIF, but that is, it is critical to this project. The city recently was approved a tax increment financing district. That means within that district, any new taxable revenue, grand list as we call it, can be held in that district and used for public infrastructure that supports the private development, so that the taxes from that are only used for this new project, which means the regular taxes that everybody else is paying aren't being used. So in this case, the estimate is that the new hotel and improvements to value on the Capital Plaza project will result in about $150,000 a year in new taxes. That money will be redirected to pay for this garage. And that's all the tax money that's in this project. So the rest of it is not going on to the tax rate increasing anybody else's taxes. And we're only allowed to use that for 20 years, so that is in the pro forma for 20 years. The other thing that's conservative in this pro forma is that the state doesn't allow us to increase the amount of, or to estimate the increase of the amount of property tax. So this shows that Capital Plaza's tax bill is never going to change for 20 years. Now, I'm sure they'd like that deal, but it actually realistically is going to go up a little bit from time to time, like all the rest of ours do. So that means that 150 that we've estimated will actually get higher. The state doesn't allow us to assume that, so for our purposes of being conservative, we've kept that flat the entire time. We also have not factored in any additional TIF increment. So any other new development in the TIF district could be used to help pay for this. But even though we know of a few that might happen, we're not counting on. So we're not speculating on something that might happen, nor are we assigning them, partly to be careful and partly so that we may be able to use that increment for other public infrastructure needed, maybe to make other good projects happen. Finally, we've included $50,000 in growing in capital reserve funds on an annual basis. Yesterday, I was St. Albans to go through the operation of their parking garage, which they use, that was recommended to them by their parking garage expert. We've confirmed with them that that is the recommendation. So in our annual budget is $50,000 a year essentially building up to be used for maintenance and repair to properly keep track of that. That's in addition to about $90,000 a year in annual maintenance and operating costs. Okay, where's the money coming from? Permits. As part of our deal with Capital Permits, they're going to, Capital Plaza, excuse me, they're going to purchase 200 permits per year. Those can be used by them. They can also be used by someone else if they're not being used. We'll talk a little bit about flex spending in a bit, excuse me, flex use in a bit. But they are committing to this for basically the life of the project, so for 30 years. And again, those rates go up, can go up by CPI as others. We also are counting on 80 other permits to date. None of those have been identified, although certainly we are talking to the state, we're talking to people like Vermont Mutual, we are talking, we're looking, we have 60 parking lot permits now that we sell, and we may consider just moving some of those into this garage and freeing up the surface parking spaces for short-term parking. So we're fairly confident we'll be able to find 80 parkers that are wanting to buy annual permits at 125 a month. We've also accounted for 30 spaces in the garage for the Christ Church affordable housing if it happens, at a much lower amount, $50 per month. So that is to facilitate affordable housing and to ease the burden on that project and the people living there. That really doesn't come until the third year, but I put it first year just so people could see it. And then 38 spaces that are just not accounted for for anybody, that anyone can park in. And the $80 a month estimate is actually based on our actual experience with parking lots and those kind of things. It wasn't a made-up number. We did quite a bit of analysis of what we get for pay-as-you-go right now, and that was the number we came up with. 104 flex spaces. So this is really where the finances of the garage work and work well. This is what's done with parking garage management around. Someone has a permit for the lot, but if they're not there that day, there's spots open, so someone else parks there and pays. So essentially, you're charging twice. Or Capital Plaza guests primarily use their spaces overnight while they're in the hotel, but they're gone during the day. So somebody else comes in during the day, parks in the spot to do whatever they're doing. So, you know, you're not cheating anybody. It's just maximizing the use of the spot. So there will always be more spaces in the garage than when you add up all of these permits. And that is actually, when you think about it, what we do right now is surface parking. We have parking lots around. We sell $100 a month permit for sale back here. But if Steven Mills here had one, and he wasn't here this week because he took vacation, then someone else is parking in that spot, paying the daily rate every day, but he still has his permit for when he's here to use. So that is a system that we're already using now, and it is the way to run parking garages. So when you look all that, then you add the TIF, this is the total annual revenue for the garage. So if you break it down, and I wanted to do this because this really shows graphically where the money's coming from. You've got the Capital Plaza permits in the TIF, and the hourly flex permits and all the other permits. And I mention this because I've heard several people say, and I'm going to talk about this more, that, you know, "Why is the city giving everything to Capital Plaza?" And 62% of the revenue for this project is coming directly or indirectly from Capital Plaza. So if it's a $10 million project, I think it's fair to say about $6.2 million capital assets is coming from that group, in addition to donating the land. So I just want to make people understand that. But as you can see, other than TIF, which is the hotel increment only, there's no other property tax in that. Whoa, done. Skip right by the question and answer section. We actually got to go back into the...
Mayor?
You got to reopen that. Start it from the beginning. You got to run right out of the hole there. All right, I just... We need someone younger here for the two of us.
Probably everyone's younger.
Right. Someone bring a teenager one. Okay, perfect. So the expenses we talked about are pretty straightforward in this project. The bond is the biggest one. So this is based on the first 10-year average, and I can explain why I did that versus an annual, but it had to do with the no interest in the bond the first few years and then full payment, so I tried to get a spread. But the bond is, you know, the high $500,000s, the capital reserve, again, the reason it's higher than 50 is it's averaged double after 10 years. And the expenses themselves are about $92,000,000. So what are those expenses? We're not going to add staff. It will be a fully automated garage system with parking passes, cars, those types of things. But as I was told by St. Albans, make sure you have plenty of extra gates because people run into them. So there are gate supplies, there are cleaning, emptying trash, there is plowing in the winter if needed, there are elevator maintenance and those kinds of things, electrical costs, utility costs, various operating facilities. So they spend less than this in a year, but we estimate it high to be safe. Next, please. So just looking at the net of, this is what we're spending and this is what we're taking in. If you look at it cumulatively over time, you see the first five years, we do really well. This is our net income. That's because we're only paying interest on the bond for the first four. Then we actually go through a period of time where the garage costs a little bit more than it takes in. Not a lot, but a little, so we dip into that reserve we built up, and then it swings back out, and as you can see, and then when you get to the 25-year average, it dips again because the TIF revenue goes off after year 20. So that is kind of the trajectory of the garage and how we expect it to perform based on the assumptions that we have financially. Okay, what are the concerns? Well, first of all, we're building a bigger garage in the center of town. That's part of the, and I'm going to talk a lot about the design in a bit, but that is clearly a concern that I know is on a lot of people's mind. Reduce car use in the future. We all are hoping for less cars in the future. I think there are many reasons. We don't know what that looks like. We don't know if cars are going to change to different types of vehicles. We don't know if there are going to be less cars. What we do know is, as the mayor said, we have a lot of parking. I said 610 managed parking spaces plus everything else around. There's no reason why, if car use really drops, that this can't be the last place that people park. The last 348 cars in Montpelier will be here, and everything else will be open space, new development, and whatever. So we're thinking that in the third years, there will still be 348 cars in Montpelier? We don't know, but that seems to be what people are projecting. Can't secure permit holders. Obviously, you all saw the finances. If we don't have the 80 permit holders, then, you know, we're in trouble. And as I mentioned, we currently have 60 permit holders without going to any of the bigger employers. So we are confident, but that is a risk factor if we can't find them. And finally, the flex spaces. I explained to you how those work, and you can see how important they are to the finances. If people don't park there, we don't get those flex spaces. Or if the permit holders are really successful and are using them all and we can't flex them as much, those are all risks. But they don't have, those risks have not worn out in other places. Contingencies. This is where I get, I sneak out the back room and say, "No, I didn't actually promise anything." It's based on the current financial assumptions. We don't have bids, so the construction numbers could change. Interest rates could change. Any number of circumstances could change. So it's also contingent on the council actually saying, "We're going to put this on the ballot," and then the bond vote actually passing. So those are huge contingencies because without those two things happening, this project won't go anywhere. And finally, obtaining regulatory permits, as we were talking earlier. We still have to go through a permit process. We still have to meet all the requirements. We have to do all the necessary things that any other project would do. So that is something that has to happen. So our next step, our securing our contractors, we've pretty much done that now. Taking the team that is DEW Construction, people are building One Taylor, also building the hotel. They were secured by us for, by a competitive bid process for One Taylor, and they agreed to hold that bid price, the bid price for the parking garage. I don't know what deal they have with Capital Plaza. That's their business. But they will be coordinating all three projects at the same time, which makes a lot of sense and efficiency. Desmond is a parking garage specialist. People don't really know what they're talking about with this, so we're engaging with them to advise us on the automatic updated parking system and other design elements of a parking structure. And Rabidu Architects out of Waterbury are the people that designed the hotel and initially the parking garage, so it made sense to continue with them since they already have the knowledge and the work product to continue. So that's who we'll be working with, securing parking commitments. We will be talking to try to line up the other parking people, completing the design. And I don't just mean the external design that some people want, but for this to go up and actually be constructive, there's real engineering drawings and all that, and that takes time, which people need to do this. So the full structural design, permit applications and process, and of course, public outreach and information, much like what we're doing right now. So frequently asked questions. These are questions that we've heard just since this came up. Will traffic be reviewed? Putting a big parking garage in the center of town? And the answer is yes, it has to be. It's a permit requirement. The city did a traffic study for the One Taylor project with the buses. That basis of that was used to then do a traffic study for the new hotel and the 200-unit garage, and that information will be used to assess this. Certainly, it's in the center of town. We can have busy traffic. It's a major concern for everybody. We also note that parking garages, especially with these uses, not everyone leaves at the same time. So hotel guests come and go at different times, people visiting the city. There certainly is a morning and afternoon rush. I was at the St. Albans Hotel. They have a very large number of permits that the state bought and a very large number of permits that their Hampton Inn bought. And it was maybe half, three-quarters full. And I was like, "What's that?" And they said, "Well, the state workers are here all that day, and then about 5:00, they leave, and the hotel people come in." And so we're always half to two-thirds full, even though our numbers show that we're selling out all our spots. So I think those are all things that have to come in to factor when we're reviewing those. What are the stormwater impacts? People are understandably and righteously concerned about our river and Lake Champlain. Stormwater is a heavily regulated issue. We have to get all our stormwater permits. We'll note, though, and our architect said, is that this garage is going on top of paved surfaces. So it is already impervious surface that has stormwater now that goes into the city's drainage system. It's not adding new impervious surface. Doesn't mean we're not going to try to do the best we can, and that we're going to drain it, we're going to have drainage, but the top of the garage is still just as impervious as the asphalt on the bottom. But we will be looking at that. Why is the hotel project leading the schedule? Well, I think the reason is we have an opportunity. When you want to do exciting things with economic development, sometimes you have to take these opportunities. I've been city manager here for 23 years. We've been talking about parking and parking garages for all of that time, and long before I came. This was an opportunity to work together with a private partner, create a public good without a massive hit to the taxpayer. And as I mentioned, they are on a schedule with Hilton. Therefore, for us to work this together, they cannot proceed. My next question was, why don't they just build their own garage? I think probably if they would, they could, if they would have, if they could have, they would have, and not had to get into all this mess and come to meetings and all of this. But the fact is, the hotel itself is going to be somewhere in the neighborhood of $17 million. Garage, as you saw, is 10 for this side, so maybe it was eight. The numbers just didn't work. Project didn't make sense to carry that whole bit. And so it is really a contingent. This is truly a but for, if we can't build a garage, they can't build a hotel. So if this doesn't happen, there will be no hotel or garage. They shared kindly, shared all of their numbers with our consultant. Us city officials didn't see them, but we have a private real estate consultant that's been working with us. They evaluated the pro formas, and they said, "Yes, they're correct. They can't support both entities." And again, this is, that money's all being financed locally, where people are obviously putting up their own collateral and those kinds of things. It's not the Hilton Corporation. Is the city giving Capital Plaza a deal? Well, we have a deal, we have an agreement, but as I mentioned, they're paying close to sixty-two percent of the costs of this project on an annual basis, and they're donating the land. So, they're paying less than they would've paid for themselves, but they couldn't afford to do themselves. So, we're getting a deal because now the city's gaining parking structure and potentially gaining a hotel and all the other vitality that comes with it. I mean, all those people may have philosophical differences about that, but I think in terms of the agreement that was reached, it is fair and equitable, and certainly, everyone is paying their fair share. Is the design final? That's really the biggest thing I'm gonna spend a full more. The answer is mostly no. There are still chances for making some changes. However, those are bounded by cost, and they're bounded by time. And to some extent, the mass needed to bring in, without this number of cars, it really doesn't work, or spaces, excuse me, without three-hundred-and-fifty spaces, it really doesn't work. So, those are sort of the boundaries around the design, but there are things we can talk about. This is a, this is a drawing, an aerial view, conceptual, of the new garage. You can see, this one is larger than it, it goes into the sixty-state street lot, creating still a roadway through. And when we said the net new parking spaces, we were counting those that are lost on that parking lot, so we're not double counting here. And this is one version of this garage, so some things can change, and we'll talk about designs right now. One is, can we build it only on Capital Plaza property and not have it go over onto the next lot? Not only freeing up that lot for even more parking, but also the farmer's market and all the things like that. The answer is yes, but it's gonna require two more stories on the garage. So, if we wanna have a six-story garage rather than a four-story, that's the trade-off. So, it would, it's something we can talk about, but it is, it does come with its pros and cons. Can the garage have flat floors to deal with future reuse? The answer is yes. That question was asked. There's what they call the steep spiral on the end, it would look slightly different, it could have flat floors. That will add another floor, a floor and a half if we do that. And we still need to go on to the neighboring lot, but it can be done. So, again, that's a trade-off. And financially, for that, it's about the same, so we'll be paying out, so it wouldn't be a change in finance, it would be a change in design, and it would be higher. What does the green wall consist of? This is the only cheap I have for the night, it shows how much I know about plants. It is going to be wisteria, clematis, and, I can't remember my handwriting, trumpet vines, Boston ivy, English ivy, and Virginia creeper. And these are apparently types of ivies that grow. They're very sustainable in this climate, they will be planted either to the ground around, it will require some watering and maintenance at the beginning, the first year or two, as they start to grow, and then kind of manage on their own after that. This was our architectural team recommended this for the garage. And that, that is taking the garage design that Capital Plaza had approved and extending it. We could certainly look at other facades. When you start talking about things like brick, or granite, or anything like that, you start getting really expensive. Underneath that is basically concrete facing. So, I think the idea that living green type things are preferable. So, I mentioned the maintenance cost, it's built into our renewal maintenance, it really isn't substantial. Can a roof be added for public use? A lot of people have asked about a roof. We've got some good ideas, could we have another roof and maybe create a green roof and have it be a public park, an elevated public park? These are fantastic ideas. A roof that does not support those things adds another one-point-two to one-point-five million dollars to the project, just a roof to cover and have structural supports. If we added the additional weight support and those kind of things for the activity, it would be more. That is not, that kind of money is not supported in this pro forma. Now, if we wanted to take the community, make a collective decision that we were willing to spend tax money for those kind of amenities, then that's a different discussion. But in terms of the financial pro forma of this, this project, that doesn't fly, but it could be done. How does this impact sightlines? At its current height, it's actually at or below the Hampton Inn. All of those sightlines were viewed, reviewed by Design Review, so there will not be any obstruction of the major view sheds. And can, so another question we had is, can parking be reduced at One Taylor Street? People say, "Well, get rid of all the parking at One Taylor, move them all into the garage, and we'd have a bigger green space at One Taylor." And we maybe can. We can't reduce all of it. I talked with Housing Vermont today. We have, the city has already signed a lease with them for parking, which we can't break unilaterally, and which all their financing is based on. So, their project has been successfully financed, going with the premise that there is onsite parking for their residents. We think, though, that even honoring that, we may be able to reduce some. I don't have the number yet, we're taking a look at that, so we could possibly open up some additional green space. But can't get rid of all of them, but we can try to make One Taylor a little bit more green. And then finally, can net zero principles be included? We have set a goal for net zero, and we're building a big old parking garage. How does that, we get that. First thing we've started looking at is putting solar panels on the top. There would be above the top-level parking. Our estimates tell us that it could power the entire garage except for the elevators. So, all the internal lighting, every other, the electric vehicle charging stations, all those kinds of things can be powered from the panels. So, we are actively seeking to include that in the project. Obviously, we will look at the materials and other sustainable type things, again, within our budget. So, yes, we are thinking about some of those ideas. This is a ground-level elevation of the same garage you saw, the aerial view. So, obviously, from the ground, you don't see that open roof, you wouldn't see the solar panels. And this is, again, that right-hand side is into the Haini parking lot, you see the new garage on the left-hand side. So, just another view. Are there things we could do with that green wall? Of course, do we wanna have more openings? Yes, do we wanna put some art on the side? All very possible, all very, with the structure and size, unless, as I mentioned, we wanna trade and go higher to get some other elements, is basically what I'm asking. So, opportunities for public participation. Obviously, we have a council meeting on October third when they decide whether to go ahead with this. We've got a public information session tonight, and if you need to have a follow-up, you can certainly do that. There will be a formal public information hearing sometime between October twenty-seven and November five. Date has yet, not yet been set. That is required for the bond vote, so it'll be another opportunity for people to hear about the final proposal and advocate for or against to their fellow voters. In addition, there will be a permit hearings, our design review committee, development meeting, board meetings where this is considered. These are all open to the public, and there was active participation on the initial hotel and garage project, and we don't expect there will be continued participation. We will be putting regular information on the web, front porch forum, in the bridge, on all the usual places where the city gives information of what's happening. And again, bond vote on November sixth, the ultimate public participation for this project is when you get to vote up or down. And any other suggestions that people have for what we can do for public discourse? Certainly open to mine. There are lots of different things, and we'd like to hear what people have to say. So, I'm done talking at you. We'd like to get your questions, comments, and suggestions. I'll answer questions to the best that I am able. Certainly, just welcome for comments, and... That's all I have to say. We have fifty minutes left.
One of your earlier slides showed the parking spaces was convened, and it had fifty in there. Would you go back to that slide and show us where all those spaces are coming from and going to?
Okay. The question was, where are the fifty surface spaces coming from and where are they going to? Can you find this slide? It's a sight plan. It's a drawing, it's not an actual conceptual drawing. So, the current spaces that exist now, if you go behind Christ Church and Capital Plaza parking lot, that back corner, the city leases those, those are public parking spaces now. So, you can go in by a front, it's four hour maximum park. So, obviously, there's a big garage you're talking about, so those won't be available. But in this design... Oops, you had it. Can't see it. Do people want me to turn the light off again?
Just turn the one off.
Yeah, that's...
Turn the one that closes the council, don't turn both of them off.
Yeah. So, all the blue in the middle here, so the white in the front is the current Capital Plaza. In the back, in the middle, is the New Hampton Inn. To the right is the smaller parking garage, not the one we're talking about. The blue is basically pavement, the road in, the road out, or both, it will be two-way, but the accesses in and out of the hotel, in and out of the parking garage, et cetera. In the middle, it just shows trees and all this stuff, and it's hard to tell in this thing, but there are about sixty parking spaces created on that sight plan, surface parking spaces. The hotel needs about ten or so for themselves, for their uses, their tenants, and so the city will lease the remaining fifty for public parking, so essentially replacing what's under that garage now and moving over there. I hope that answered your question. Any other questions? Paul?
Yeah, will the, will the new enlarged parking structure open into the Haini lot as well? In other words, can people go in and out that way?
That, that is to be determined. It possibly could. It's a significant, so there's pros and cons to it. One, no, I'm sorry, sorry. The question was, can the proposed new, will the proposed new larger garage have an exit and entrance off of the Haini lot, the sixty-state street lot, as well as the center here by the Capital Plaza? And it could. In fact, the initial sketch by our architect included that. And there are advantages to that. I spent a long time talking to St. Albans about this yesterday. If, if you have a gate go down, goes out of function, then people have another way to get out, rather than just having to open it, let everybody out free. So, that's a good thing. It's always good to have second ingress. Yep, the downside of it is that these automatic parking management systems are not inexpensive, and so you have to double them. You have to have them at both entrances, so double gate system, double electronic pass systems, those kind of things. The current budget only includes one set, but we're looking to see how, what that might be. So, that, that could be.
Can I have a follow-up? If, if that were to happen, then, would that allow the lowest level of parking to be replaced? I understand that had to be removed because of floodplain issues, the lowest level of the parking structure?
So, the question was, if that happened, does that allow the lowest level of parking to be returned, I guess, because of floodplain? I don't know the answer to that. I don't understand all that floodplain thing, so we will get an answer to that.
Bill, now, I believe White and Burke were your consultants for the TIF project and the whole bit. Were they also the consultants for the financing for this garage?
Yes, so the question was, were White and Burke the consultants for the financing of the garage? Yes, they were.
And could I have a follow-up on that?
Yeah, of course.
I know that on the TIF proposal, there were a little, there were some assumptions that were built into their, their model, and I was wondering if they had some hard numbers or something that we could shed a little bit more light on the actual financing?
So, the question is, do we have something that can shed more light on the financing? What do you mean?
I mean, basically, some of their assumptions. I just wanted to see what their assumptions were, you know, what the average cost per day per space. You know, I'm just trying to figure out what their, what the math was behind some of the stuff.
Sure, I think we can certainly provide that. I mean, basically, the numbers that I ran for you right now were based, were all those assumptions, the cost and revenues and the usage patterns. We do have a spreadsheet. Their full pro forma was reviewed by state for, does it make sense? I mean, they didn't approve whether, you know, this, we should do the project, but the economic people at Department of Commerce went through it, and their report was, yes, these are reasonable assumptions, yes, this, this, the TIF application was broader base because it was done before there was a specific project. We kinda had two parallel tracks we were getting, a TIF district approved, and then negotiating this specific project. And so, they were actually under two different contracts with us. One is a financial analyst, and one is a TIF consultant. Phil?
Is there a way, though, we can understand more what TIF is? I know you've explained it, but telling is confusing, and as you go through these numbers, it's very confusing.
Okay.
My boyfriend has a PhD, doesn't get it, so...
It's, it's, it's... Hi, you are not alone. So, the question was, can I explain more about what TIF is? And try to make it more understandable. And it's one of those things that is, once you get it, it's kind of really simple, but explaining it is very difficult. So, I, you know, so I'm gonna try. What, so it's called a tax increment financing district. So, any property in that district is sort of their, their property value. So, everyone, let's pretend this houses, everyone here, your houses have value, right? So, that's your tax value, that just goes to the city and the school, just like it always does. But let's say you built a second house on your property, and you're in this district, and now that's gonna be an extra two-hundred-thousand dollars of value, so your taxable is gonna be another five-thousand dollars. And, but in order to build that project, which is gonna be a great thing for the city because a whole bunch of great things are gonna happen here, you need a new road, you need another road coming around. And lo and behold, if you just spent six-thousand dollars a year for twenty years, we could, the city could build that road. So, taking that new tax increment from that new project to build this public amenity, public infrastructure, which helps that project happen, but now has also opened up a couple of other lots that could also maybe have new houses. So, whereas we haven't touched the house jardine, that's just the same as the other ones. So, it's, it's really trying to say, what, what is the new increment? That's what that means. It's the tax increment, and you only use that additional increment to finance public projects. We can't take tax, like we, using this project, we couldn't take the tax increment and just give it to the Capital Plaza, say, "Here, this is a subsidy for your project." It has to be for a public infrastructure that benefits more than just the private, that private. So, we also couldn't have used the tax increment financing and built the two-hundred-unit garage, basically, and said, "Yeah, that's unit two-hundred spaces, so wink, wink, that's our public garage." That wouldn't pass the test because there's no public benefit to that. The larger garage creates the public benefit, therefore, we can use the hundred-and-fifty-thousand of new tax money from that to go into the trust, because it's helping their project happen, but it's also helping potentially other projects. So, someone else could come in downtown and say, "Gee, I never could've developed downtown, but now there's a less than a park, so I can..." So, it's helping to stimulate. I hope that helped.
I will.
I'll try again later. Something will be going, Chris, Steve?
Bill, as a follow-up to that, can you explain the relationship of TIF districts to the education fund?
Yes. The advantage of using a TIF district from the municipal perspective, and I know there's differences also with that, is that seventy percent of this, of the education tax, so most of us as homeowners, right, we pay about forty percent of our taxable, comes to the city, about sixty percent goes for school taxes, some large portion of which goes to the state ed fund and then is refunded out. Under TIF, seventy percent of that education tax goes into the TIF fund. So, for these types of projects, municipalities get to access funds that they wouldn't otherwise get, ed funds. The theory behind it is that these, that the ed fund never would've gotten this money because the project wouldn't have been built. So, the ed fund's getting thirty percent that would've been zero. This hotel doesn't get built, right? No one's getting that hundred-and-fifty thousand, not the city or the ed fund. So, by using that new increment, that's actually the seventy percent, so their taxes will actually be higher than that, but the rest will go to the state. That's, that's how that works, which is why the TIF district has to go through very robust review at the state level before they approve them, because essentially, the state's foregoing potential education. Dan?
All right, this is a follow-up to financing. I have other questions, but this specifically, when you were looking at the contingencies before, if, because we live in interesting economic times, what if the hotel doesn't make its numbers, let's say, and so the available leasing of those spots fails to materialize in the yearly revenue? Who's on the hook for the costs?
Well, ultimately, so the question was, what happens if the hotel doesn't make its numbers? And who's on the hook? So, first of all, the hotel has a right to... So first of all, the hotel has a right to supplement. You can't steal customers anymore. That's, that's way down the list. They have a right to supplement. So if they find they don't need as many, they can lease you a restaurant if you want in a new places. But ultimately, I mean, let's call it like it is. This is a city bond. It's being, it's backed by the full faith and credit of the city. So if the whole thing should collapse, yes, the taxpayers would have to pay for it. Hide that or can't encode that in any way. But they do have a contract. They would be required to leave that. And that would go with any, if they sold it to another hotel manager, then they would have to. It's like any long-term financing agreement. Obviously, we're hoping this will help to succeed. So I had, that's Jill. I can't remember who's answer up first, but that's a pretty good one.
I can, I mean, it's go back to those 50 spots. And who owns those 50 spots?
The city owns all the, you mean the 50 spots now?
The, the 50 spots, the blue.
The, the blue 50 spots are gonna be owned by Capitol Plaza and leased by the city, just as they are now. There's no change in the current status, just a different location.
So how long does that lease for?
Ten years, thirty, right? Ten with option to renew. Ten with option to renew.
It's been 25 now.
What's that?
It's been 25 now.
It's, currently, lease has gone for 25 years. And the current option was 10 to renew. Like I said, if cars reduce and we don't need it, then. I, I don't know. We haven't discussed longer, but. Is there, you're looking like you have a follow-up question, so I don't want to rob you out of it.
Bill, come.
Okay. Jill?
I'm just a little worried about the cost. And I'm wondering about the $93,000 maintenance and how that was come up with? Because I've worked with someone who did something like this in another city and he said he thought that was quite low. And I also work in a building where the parking garage is sort of falling apart and getting rust stains all over our cars. And it needs a lot of work. And the gate fell down on someone I know very recently. She's not the suing type, so the LCT passive is, but the LCT passive might be on the hook if something happens to the city. So.
I'm very grateful.
Were, were, you know, were the increased insurance costs considered in this project? How much the $93,000 arrived at? And how does that go up as the size of the parking garage increases? And was another venue considered, like the pit across the street, which is already ugly as opposed to the river?
So there's two questions, two part questions. So let me deal with one and then the other. Because the maintenance cost would have been the same no matter where the location is, so.
Yes.
The, there is a long list of things that are included, but basically, we talked to other municipal garage people, as well as the people that, like Desmond, and there's another one called Simon, and something that are basically parking garage excellent. They do, they give you a recommended. So it includes your annual operating, what is it gonna be? As I said, we're not staffing it. That's usually a very, when somebody puts a person there, like an attendant, that right there adds a huge cost.
Well, my friend would have been in on that, but okay.
Well, so you do, so there are annual elevator and gate certifications, maintenance. And if you do them, I can't speak for the circumstance and how much maintenance that people's happened at the private one. But there's a very detailed schedule of what needs to be done, when joints need to be fixed and repaired and when authorities can be sealed and those kinds of things. And that is all included in the annual, as well as the Capitol reserve, top of that. As I mentioned, good point, St. Albans has about six gates in a storage site right there, so they can replace them quickly. And they check every minute. They have a person that goes, it's not a full-time position, but a city person just goes through every day and picks up litter and, you know, empties the trash and those kinds of things. They have a contract for, you know, the top floor is open, so it's snow season, you gotta clear that out. Big city trucks, so those are parts of the cost. As I said, elevator maintenance, those are the elements of it. So it's not staffed costs, it's actually maintenance services. So you have service contracts for all of these things. And it's pretty detailed. As I said, St. Albans is in relatively the same market, and I think we assumed it might be more costly here than there. They're spending around 60 or 70, you have all of those services. As well as they are also setting the 50s. Jill?
A bit about the locations?
Yeah. You're right. She had a second hard question. So locations, we have spent a long time looking at all sorts of locations. And there are pros and cons to really all of them. We have looked at the pit and in fact, continue to look at the pit as other, as a source of development. One, either they create, you know, a new development could use this, or a smaller deck could still happen. This isn't gonna solve the entire parking problem, seeing populated in the short run anyway, so. But there are problems. One is, as big as that pit is, it's owned by sort of three separate owners. Vermont Mutual has shown no interest in wanting to do this. They've been very, very clear with us, we don't want anything to do with it. The federal government, on the other side, behind the post office, since 9/11, they've been talking, no, can't get anyone near us. The state has been willing to talk to us, as they have been also at the site across from one Taylor. But the state owns 100, somewhere 106 parking spaces there already. They've been free, they've paid for it. So they've said, fine, you can build a garage here, we get 106 spaces free, because we already own 106 spaces. We'll use our land, you can do what you want. Well, you try running these numbers with a quarter of the garage not producing any revenue, it stops becoming feasible. Not saying it couldn't happen, but that's, so when we did a study, the spaces that came out were, ironically enough, before this was ever proposed, one of the top spaces was exactly where we're putting the garage. A second was the parking lot right behind Obashan's and the left set back there. Getting in and out of those narrow alleys in traffic, that was problematic. We talked about putting it out back here, but there's issues with ledge. And again, have all the traffic running into the state and coming through where the emergency vehicles are. Mentioned the pit site, two Taylor Street, which is directly across the big, huge state parking lot. In fact, before I started, the state proposed to go to 600-unit garage here. And I am told that locals here went apoplectic and it didn't happen. So, but one of the arguments about that was that it's too far. It doesn't serve the downtown shoppers, that we're really just a state employee parking. And the other issue is, it is right on the riverbank. But financially, it's the same problem. They have 166 surface spaces. And they said, fine, we can do it, but we get the 166, in fact, they want them. So we'll take 200, then build what you want. And in fact, we looked at that, as far as this with Capitol Plaza. They, you know, they wanted 200, Capitol Plaza needs 200, and so the city was gonna do all this stuff and get, you know, 25 spaces or something. That doesn't make any sense. So we have certainly looked at it. But also, it's driven in some part by the fact that here was an opportunity. Private development, the need for parking, so a chance to have economic development, they're willing to donate land and pay full freight. They're not getting break on their parking rights. They're paying the same as anybody else, so. But it wasn't just careless until it. Jill?
So I know that one of the big pushes over the last couple of years was the re-adoption of the master plan, new zoning. And I know that one of the key things in the city council has been more housing. Have they looked at any other uses of the site? Or how'd you guys come to the conclusion, other than the fact that Beshar has had an opportunity to put a Hilton or a Hampton Inn on this property? I mean, your consultants should have looked at other potential uses for this site. Did they, what did they rule on the housing?
So we didn't necessarily look at other uses on this site, understanding this site is presently owned by the Capitol Plaza. So, you know, this was their opportunity to say, we have some land to bring to the table for this project. It meets the city need and it also meets the private need. That said, we have spent a fair amount of time, and they have, to try to accommodate the housing project of Christchurch. And as we, and the city, of course, is constructing now a housing project right behind it. So certainly, housing remains a top priority, but so does commercial development and, but it's a good question. But wasn't our land just to use for other purposes?
There's a lot I throw out there.
Good question. Jack?
Bill, what's, I've heard questions about the provision for electric vehicle charging. Could you talk about that?
So we will be including electric vehicle charging. I can't tell you off the hand what, how many spaces there are, but there will be some. I can't remember, it's always before, or whatever. St. Albans has that. We've got to figure out whether it will be pay, pay for the charging, but there will be electric vehicles.
And there will be the capacity, load capacity built in, assuming that there's growth in demand for that?
Steve?
Yeah, I'd like to question you. I looked at the 2015 traffic study that was done by DuBois and King. And that's very different in scope and detail than the trip generation analysis that was done by the Beshar architect. And I don't see how this timing is gonna line up. If you're gonna do a complete traffic study of the generation of the combined three projects plus the construction of three simultaneous projects, you, you need a traffic study yesterday, you know? Because this could gridlock the town for the next year with all that construction of three different projects simultaneously, plus the new added traffic of the garage. You're describing a two-way street. There's no way to put a street with right-of-way through the, by the Northfield-Saints Bank. There, there's just insufficient right-of-way to put a, a street there. So you're talking about using a little driveway and a little driveway out the back of the Capitol Plaza for 348 cars. And it just doesn't pass the straight face test. So are you looking at the combined?
Yes.
Okay.
I don't wanna have the detailed answers to all your questions and appreciate, but certainly, that, you know, it's a two-way street now. Traffic comes in and out of.
It's a cluster.
Well, it wouldn't be a high, wouldn't be a high-speed street, street. But yes, all of those need to be considered.
But to have be, be putting a confluence park, you know, out behind a parking garage, you know? You, I showed you that, but I'll pass that around. It just, nobody's gonna wanna go to our confluence park if it's tucked behind a parking garage. And it, it, it's the wrong place for a parking structure. And I believe we're barreling down this path and we've lost the objectivity of the city evaluation. The city is now a promoter of this, obviously. And we need to back off or hire an independent advocate to take the place of the city as critical evaluator of such a project.
So I understand your concern. We, as I said, we still expect all of our people. We did permit review meetings with our staff that's doing this. I didn't attend and it was very clear, I'm not gonna be trying to log, they have to do their jobs and we expect, we are the regulator here. But we're also putting together a deal. We have recently formed a modular development corporation. We expect that for future projects like this, they would be doing the role the city's been doing. Quite frankly, we love them, we have a independent voice. Makes a lot of sense because they, they can be the advocate, the city can do the back.
So with the Act 250 review in the, in the.
There is no Act 250.
Okay, so, but the full design review, development review board, all that stuff's gonna be completed in time for a November vote?
So to be clear, it's an amendment to an existing permit, I believe.
No, the city is a different applicant, I understand.
So I'm not gonna argue with them. I'm telling you that I believe it goes faster than the full process because there's, it's working off an existing. Maybe, you know, I wasn't at the meeting, as I told you. So I don't actually know all of the why's, what's it where for. But technically, the city projects don't have to comply with design review. We will go through it anyway, as, as we should. But the D F developer review board has all the same criteria that everybody else is trying to, the impact on neighborhood, all those things. And we have to meet all those tests, just like you would or anybody else would. And they sit independently. We don't have any conversation with them. The council doesn't talk to them. I don't talk to them as far as what they decide.
In your presentation, you kind of gave short shrift to the view chat analysis and said that's all been done. And I just did the walk through the circuit and take your pictures. And every church spire from all, that whole circuit around Memorial Drive back across Taylor, every church spire is gonna be obstructed by this garage. You know, these are our landmarks. This is our, our town that we're.
What I said was that, I actually didn't say it had already been done. I said it was done for the Capitol Plaza project. Needs to be updated, but the height of the project, the height of the garage was not above that of the Hampton Inn. But it does have to be done. There is a criteria.
I think we're taking shortcuts and we shouldn't be. We should slow this down and let Hilton extend its window for franchise agreement.
Thank you. Dan?
This, I guess, is a maintenance question, for lack of a better word. Looking at the designs, it's your basic concrete box with a lipstick, green lipstick on it.
Yeah. He's right.
The first thing is, I've been following a lot of stuff in structural engineering. You're just seeing reports within other places that turns out steel reinforced concrete has some actual problems, especially if roads old and while oysters hitting it regularly tends to not last that long. One of the things I'm proud of with our town is that it's got a downtown, et cetera, that surpasses 100 years old. This is going to be somewhat of an ugly box with green lipstick on it, that is going to be sitting there. And I'm wondering if any thought has been given to other ways of making this so that it is not so dependent on the concrete box. One of the ways I would like to suggest is that you look at or consider the design and the, rather than the green ivy, could you consider something that looked more like St. Street? You know, where it was brick and windows and stuff, so that it echoed the town and looked like it was part of the place, rather than, you know, sort of this sun box over there. I, I, I would like to ask if that could be done. And I, I know there will be a cost.
So, so two things on that. One, I don't know the particulars. We did actually speak quite a bit with the construction and the design people about the structural stability of this, in this climate. And apparently, there are two, two ways to build it. One is the steel reinforced, the other is something else, and I don't know what it is. So they were very clear. They, they were doing the long-lasting one, not the one that's had problems. That is the extent of my knowledge of it. We can get you more info about the information of that. The second, you know, the box is a function of the efficiencies, to have the ramps and the abilities for cars, whether they're flat floors with a spiral or, or, you know, you have to get that many vehicles in. So it's, you can't really do alternate shapes. As far as external view, I mean, we could do anything people want if we're willing to spend it. It really does come down to that. We can't do, so two things. One, in the current project budget, we could make some improvements. Like I said, we can open up our windows, we could do some things, some trims, I think there's a lot of things that could be done, but not substantial. If we were to brick or do anything, that's a very significant cost. We could choose to do that. As a group, we could choose to do that. I think that's gonna be above and beyond. For example, I don't, I don't see why we would ask the permit holders, for whom we have, we can build the Capitol Plaza, where we've reached an agreement on permit price, based on what it costs to build a garage. And say, we're gonna bump up your permit price, because they're paying 60% of this, just so we can all have.
That takes into, that's the criticism, but other.
I understand that.
That this is, that.
And I also understand that there are.
One customer that you're now building this for?
Well, there's pays, we're not building it for one customer, but they're paying a large share of what it costs. I mean, there's, there's give and take. It's not all, it's not all one way. So I think if the city wants to spend, I don't know what the cost, we'll have an estimate on it, more. Maybe we put a separate article on the ballot that says, you know, here's the garage. And if yes, would you, would you really spend X more to have the exterior? I don't know. I'm thinking a lot of it. The mayor's clarion, but. Well, you know, fair enough. If it is, it's all mine. Steve?
Well, to follow up on that question, as you consider, as apparently was discussed with the dark pit, putting commercial or residential facilities on the garage so that our city gateway in effect isn't just a parking lot, but has some of the commercial and residential mentality. You're gonna tell me it's gonna cost more, or you'll have to figure out the cost. Have you undertaken any sort of analysis like that, or will you?
We can. And no, we haven't. But what I'm told, what I understand is that the restriction is the site itself. You know, the size and dimensions of the site. So if we were to put some, so basically every square foot, that's a little bit of exaggeration, but the garage, it's built to maximize the number of parking spaces in the garage. So to build an office or retail space into the building is gonna remove parking spaces. So it becomes less, less beneficial for its prime use, so then you gotta go higher. So it's not that it couldn't be done. It's, there, in that case, it's not probably even a money issue. It's a, because presumably, there'll also be lease money coming in from those spaces. It's a, because presumably, there will also be lease money coming in from those spaces. I'm thinking it's going to, it's going to be a trade-off in height.
I wanted to thank you because I've been, obviously, in email communication with Bill in the last couple of days until the last hours. And he's been very gracious in responding. I, some of my questions have been around what, what would the design, how would the design change if we had flat floors for the parking? You know, would it require ramps going around the outside of the building? Would that change the size of the building? And the other question was, what could we potentially do on the top of the building? Some ideas that have emerged in my conversations with people in my pillar have been a green space, a swimming pool, tennis courts, all sorts of different ideas. And, you know, I do think we have.
I'm just.
Pardon me?
I'm just.
But you don't think, hadn't heard that one's a great idea, Bill? You know, but there are some potential other uses that would, I think, address a little bit of what we're talking about here, which would bring some life to it otherwise fairly, I don't mean to say sterile, but, you know, not as vital.
It's a garden garage. You want.
Yes, exactly.
It's a perfect box of green lipstick.
And so, you know, I wonder how we can efficiently determine what some of those costs might be in the future and have potentially a two-step plan where we build the garage with enough capacity, weight capacity, to do something more. And I guess my other question, and so I'm just kind of not really asking a question. Are we limited to five floors?
Well, our zoning allows six.
Oh, okay. I didn't realize that.
But we've also heard people talking about view sheds and other values in the community and mass. So, if it's already too big and hideous, then we add a couple more floors to it. So, I think there's, there's a lot of trade-offs. I mean, you may have come in late, but thanks to your prompting, I tried to answer some of those questions. We can do the flat floor. It's actually what they call the steep spirals on the ends of the building. So, it probably would look a little different. There'd probably be little spiral things on the end of it. We could get, I think, a rendering for that. It turned out the cost for that is about the same as what we're doing now. But it required an additional floor. So, that was a trade-off. But we'll get a sense of what that might look like. As far as the upper floor, I said this earlier, Bill, since you were the one that caused me to say it, I'll say it again. We, to just put a roof on the building would be about 1.2 to 1.5 million. That doesn't include the load bearing for human use or anything additional on top of that. Now, those were ballpark estimate numbers. We chased that out, but again, I think those are additional costs. What I've asked for late this afternoon was, do I have an answer yet, was, what would it cost to do extra load to potentially add a roof in the future? So, I can't answer. Thank you for all your suggestions.
So, a lot of what I'm hearing is about concerns about the visual impact of the parking garage. So, I'm originally from the UK, and a lot of our garages kind of go underground. And I understand this problem because of being so close to the river, but has any, anything been done, any evaluation going under versus going up, even if it's just one floor down or anything to do with that?
So, the earlier question that Barb asked about parking, our preference would be to go down for the reasons that you met. And, I mean, we couldn't put the whole thing underground to minimize the mass. But there are floodplain issues and there are issues with how you, you know, person gets caught down below the surface and water comes in and is in a federal floodplain. So, we have certain precautions and there are certain limits to how far we can go down. It's the same question, Chase. I don't have the details, but it is, it is a restricting factor. We've got. Far?
Oh, sorry. Just as sort of a follow-up of Dan's, our new zoning has architectural standards for the urban core. And as I read them, it would probably not allow for a concrete box with lipstick. So, has consideration been given to looking at the architectural standards?
This is all going through the planning office. Like I said, we had a permit meeting yesterday with Paul team and I purposely didn't attend because.
Oh, I see.
To kind of keep our rules separate, so I don't know. I will say that I believe, and I can be wrong, that this may be because it's an existing permit and maybe coming in under the 2011 prior, so.
Yeah, I wasn't sure if it was the prior.
I have a couple of questions. In fact, the original project for the hotel and the garage, I believe $17 million, if I'm correct. So, if you take away the garage, which the city's going to pay for that, what does that make the real term cost for the hotel, first of all?
I'm not qualified to answer that question. We can talk to the owners. Okay, one of you answer that?
It's $15 million.
$15 million. But just out of.
Just the hotel. So, it's always been clean now.
Thank you.
It was 2012 beginning, right? The steel price was up.
Thank you. The second question is, the original garage was going to be four stories. Is the larger garage going to be five stories or is it still four?
I believe it's still four. I reserve the right to be corrected, but I believe it's still four, but wider.
Okay. And if you push into the heating option, how might that affect the funds?
We're in discussions with them. The fact that it's on how we're going to.
Thank you.
We want to resolve that.
Well, to follow up to that, what's the actual height of the street? I'm not sure if the parking garage floor is the same as a commercial.
We will get those dimensions. Somebody asked me that right before this meeting, and I realize I have some piece of information I didn't have, and I'm winging it, so we'll get, we'll add that to the public information that comes out, the actual dimensions.
So, I just wanted to say that in the research that I've done since John Snell talked about flat floors at the council meeting, it turns out that the height for a standard garage that is angled is typically different than the height of a flat-floored garage that is then going to be repurposed for a multi-use building. So, the height minimum, I guess, is somewhere around 11 or 12 feet, and the preferred is 15 feet. So, a flat-structured garage would potentially make the entire structure higher by potentially 15 feet or so.
Right. That was the feedback. It was a trade-off.
Yeah.
Last, who had a question?
I was just wondering what the square footage was.
Steve, Steve's just.
Well, he asked the height.
I asked the height. You know, I don't want to guess, and we will, we'll put that out tomorrow. I just don't have the exact dimensions. I'd rather have them be more accurate.
So, my understanding on the $10 million bond is that then there's $6 million of interest? I feel like I read that somewhere.
Over 30 years.
Over 30 years. Is that going to be conveyed to the people who are voting so they understand that this is a 30-year commitment of at least $16 million, not 10?
Yeah, I mean, so first of all, I appreciate the concern. We certainly look at that. Every bond we vote, that is the exact same circumstance of when, you know, you borrow money, you pay it back with interest. And so, every school bond, every city bond, it lists, usually lists the term and the ex, and the, and the expected interest rate. I don't know if we've actually calculated, I might say actually what the papers are, but.
It's like a lot, I think, a lot of students.
It is, but it's.
Understand what they end up paying.
Right, and that's, but that's, you know, but there's a couple of factors. Number one, most communities don't just have $10 million to pay cash for this or any other major project. And the other is, now, this is a little bit different because of the way it's being paid for with the users, but even if it was just a general fund project, we're going to build a new bridge, let's say. Essentially, that is depreciation from municipal government. So, the people that live here today don't get socked of paying all $10 million, and then the users in 20 years don't. So, by having, you know, someone leaves town, moves in, the people that move in 10 years from now are paying their share of the project and they're getting the benefit of it. But you borrow money, you pay for it.
And if the maintenance is such a 30 years, it's a hole, it's standing there, is there going to have to be another fund to fix it up because it's not used enough?
Well, I, I mean, I don't know the exact answer to that, but that's not that different from other infrastructure than, the estimated life of this is about 40 years if it's for a tool. By then, there won't be any cars because the animal got rid of them.
Well, I agree.
I agree.
I don't think there will be.
And so, we could end up just tearing it down at the end if it's useful, right? Because the money won't be there as much, but it will have served its purpose in the meantime and then paid for through the users.
Or repurposed it.
Or repurposed it.
Thank you.
Indeed. Joe?
Next quick question. Now, the parking garage, I know we're running short on time, but the parking garage is only one part of what we're going to be voting on on November 6th. We're actually going to be voting on the whole entire TIP district? And are you guys, you guys are separating and splitting it?
There's no voting. The TIP district is done and approved.
Okay, gotcha.
That's happened. The state approved the TIP district last week. That's, we now have a TIP district. So, what the voters vote on is any projects that are borrowing money that are using TIP funds, so, like this. So, they, so in the future, any other projects we did within the TIP district, the voters get to vote on those projects.
Okay, and the total proposed cost of the TIP district was between 27 and 30 million? With all the projects, was that?
That was if we did everything, but there's no guarantee that we'll do them. Each individual project gets, goes through a process just like this. So, there's no commitment to be done. You've passed TIP. In fact, someone just turned their TIP, you got it, never used it, and turned it back because somebody passed it, but never did any of the projects.
The wastewater plant, I think.
So, no, he wasn't talking about that. He was talking about TIP projects. But there may be other, another item. We do have just, I do not want to derail this conversation in the last six minutes. We are looking at a big upgrade of our water, our wastewater treatment plant that we also be on, and that's kind of, it's a whole different night of our days. Different funding, different environmental benefits.
When will we actually have a site plan, an elevation plan of what is actually being proposed?
We're working on that now. Obviously, something that has to be submitted as an application, so I can't give the exact date, but I'd say we've done a couple of things. And, you know, every time we have these conversations, every time we get a suggestion, I send it to our folks and say, "This is something we could do. This is possible. What does this mean or what it would look like? What are the options?" Taking these comments very seriously, we get it. This is going to be the center of our community. We want it to be the best it can be.
Just a quick thing about when those site plans are available, you know, it's great to have them digitally. I think that's wonderful, but it turns out that not everybody is a digital person. And so, if those could be available either through the library or through one of the offices here, that'd be fantastic because.
Great suggestion.
For people to be able to take them home. We have, if my pillar people are so thoughtful and considerate and need some time and need a night or two to look at these things, so to have multiple copies so that they can look at them might be great.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea, and certainly would. Get those out every way possible. I could foresee the city manager writing a bridge article with all this information and putting updated images in that. I think he might have that on his mind. Councilmember Glenn Hutchison is here, actually gave me a good suggestion last week that we use our hall space to put up information on any of our city projects, not just this one. So, anybody coming in can just see, "This is, this is the parking garage. This is the wastewater plant. This is the whatever. There's pictures of it. Here's the general information."
Alternate scenarios, Joe?
To the extent that we have one. So, we have five minutes till 8 o'clock. Not that that was a hard stop. Does anybody else have anything they want to add? Ask, say? Anybody argue for extending longer time?
I want to briefly say that I've done the massing preliminarily of this garage, and you can, you could do a two-level garage spanning the pit from the pavilion all the way to the sheriff's office with a third floor, the park-like scenario that you're talking about, food carts, et cetera.
Housing.
Housing. I mean, we, we need to think this carefully. If we're making a 10 million, 16 million plus 40-year commitment to potentially trash our waterfront, we really need to think carefully about our alternatives and whether or not the advent of light train passenger rail coming to and from the junction and the 302 and onto Berry is going to alleviate a lot of the need for this. I think a lot of the state commuters would rather leave their cars out there and take the train into town than to congest the cars with day-long parking. So, I don't think we're, I think we're rushing this to meet a Bishara Hilton deadline, and it could be a grave mistake. And we could, we could slow this down and do a thorough analysis. I don't think you could speak on behalf of the current day Vermont Mutual. I've heard conflicting information from one of our council members, nor the federal government would lay these clout on the, so, the state is open to this. I think we need to revive, as your TIP consultants said we were doing in their TIP plan. We need to revive discussion about the potential to use the entire pit lot as an alternative to this. I'm also told that could work in concert with the new hotel, but it would also spread things out over time and not create this three projects simultaneously with a huge unending traffic problem.
Going once, going twice? Thank you for spending a hot summer evening with us. Appreciate all your questions and input. It's been very helpful. I hope you got something out of it as well, and please stay in touch with the process.